Good evening. I'd like to call to order this the regular town council meeting for Tuesday, September 13th, 2016. The opening prayer will be given by Rabbi Bruce Alpert of Beth Israel Synagogue. Please rise.
Rebunshel Olam, Master of the Universe. No season brings to mind the passage of time as does summer. As the days grow shorter, we comfort ourselves with the belief that they remain long enough and warm enough for us to continue to enjoy. Then the calendar turns, and the first hints of autumn brush the morning air, and we know another season has passed. But we do not despair, for we know that from our awareness of time's passage comes wisdom, the wisdom to prepare and provide for colder days, and the wisdom to seek from those days the spiritual warmth they too can provide. Lord, fill the men and women who serve this town with such wisdom. Make the quality of their deliberations and decisions worthy of the trust that has been placed in them. May they serve this community of ours with a wisdom that will help us on life's colder days, yet which honors our freedom to find and seek our own sources of warmth. And may we come to know your grace, your compassion, and your kindness in our contentment on life's coldest days and in the promise of warmer days to come. Ken Yeharzon, so may it be his will.
Thank you. We'll have the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you kindly call the roll?
Thank you. Fishbein.
Here.
Laffin.
Here.
Laterno.
Here.
Marone.
Here.
Chertel.
Present.
Sullivan.
Here.
Testa.
Here.
Zandry.
Here.
Chairman Savoni.
Here. First item is the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve and accept consent agenda items A through R, T, and U.
Second. Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the consent agenda passes. With that, we have several appointments. We will start by calling up the appointments to the ZBA David Desjardins and James Hine. Next, for inland wetlands and water courses, Michael Caruso, please come up. Next, on the Historic Properties Commission are Jean Garcia, Maria Santiago, and I don't see Robert Prentice. Thank you all for accepting your appointments and for your service to the town. Next item is item four. The only item removed from the consent agenda is item 3S. Councilor Fishbein, would you kindly move that?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I move the item as presented in anticipation, well, with a correction.
Thank you.
Replacing Liz Landau with Steve Lazarus, and as amended by the addendum to add James Fitzsimmons, who, James Fitzsimmons, Tom Laffin from the council, and Christopher Chertel from the council. So moved.
Second. Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion in the council? Any comment from the public? Mr. Morganstein.
Larry Morganstein, South Main Street. I was surprised when I originally saw the agenda, and it did not include two council members, but I'm glad that's been rectified. I think if anything that came out of the POCD was that the recommendation strongly stated that for it to succeed, they wanted the implementation committee to have people on it from all different departments. So, good to see that happened.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? There being none, before we call the roll, I think there should be two abstentions noted, or if you want to do that during the roll, that's fine.
Yes.
Laffin.
Abstain.
Laterno.
Yes.
Marone.
Yes.
Chertel.
Abstain.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Testa.
Yes.
Zandry.
Yes.
Chairman Savoni.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Do we have anyone from the POCD committee here to be sworn?
Oh, excuse me. Wasn't that just a vote to approve the amendment to the motion?
No, it was moved as presented.
As amended motion?
Yeah.
Cool. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Point of order resolved.
I'll just abstain. That's okay.
Yeah, clearly. Ms. Heffernan, you're here. Would you like to be sworn?
I'm myself.
Yep. And while she's being sworn, and Councilor Laffin and Chertel can also be sworn. Onto the next item, which is the public question and answer period. Mr. Gross.
Bob Gross, Long Hill Road. I have a question to do with last meetings, the electric division. It's, I'm still puzzled on why the electric division gave a discount to Bristol Myers when they had a contract, because they were talking, it was twelve, thirteen thousand dollars. Sounds like a large sum of money, but if you figure it out, because they said it was twelve and a half percent, nobody had a calculator last time, so that means their monthly bill would be about a hundred and four thousand dollars to be the thirteen thousand a month. That's like saying that I have a bill of two hundred dollars a month and it went up twenty-five dollars. I mean, everything's relative. They had a contract. I'm still puzzled on the council's decision on why, and I know nobody's going to answer, but why you were allowed a contract to be broken that was signed and delivered, and it's a small amount of money. It's the point of breaking a contract that was done.
So I'm not going to allow a poll of the council, but I will tell you, my interpretation of the action of the PUC was not to break a contract, it was to amend the contract. They didn't give a discount, they amended the contract to adjust it to rate, to reflect rates that were more consistent with what was going on in the rest of the town.
Well, that would be fine if they were the same type of ratepayer that the rest of the town is, but they're not. They are unique. They are the only ratepayer in their class. There is another ratepayer like them, but they are unique unto themselves only. And that's, that's the point. If they were, if it was you Chairman Savoni, and Vice Chairman Laffin, and Councilor Fishbein, and so forth, you guys are all, you guys all pay the same rates.
We hope.
You hope. You hope, based on your usage, but, and it's just, it's whether it's Bristol Myers or somebody else, it's the point is, they had a contract, they have a unique contract that they negotiated with attorneys, and yet it was changed to the two and a thirty-nine thousand. There's probably other things in their contract that are to their benefit, and it's just, I don't understand that, and so that brings me to the follow-up then. The PUC meetings are held at PUC headquarters, and I know there's always been a little discussion now and then to maybe move the meetings here so they can be filmed, so more of the public could see these meetings. I don't know how Mr. Hanley's taking this, it's up to the mayor though, I think, to be done. This would be more transparency. Yes, I know you can go to those meetings, they are on Tuesday nights, every first and third Tuesday when they have them, but the point is, they would be more transparent here and filmed. They do control a budget of over eighty million dollars, and I was wondering if the mayor would even entertain possibly starting to have some of their meetings here. The Board of Education's here now too, and they do their meetings, so they're more transparent, and they're here. What would be your feeling on having the electric division or PUC here?
They, as we're all aware, the utilities cover water, sewer, and electric. Proximity to all of their records, their offices can be of significance for their meetings. If they wanted to meet here, we could look to the schedule. Certainly this room is used very frequently now that the Board of Education is here as well, so what that schedule would look like is another whole question, but I believe the proximity to their records, to their offices, is of importance to them. It is not essential that a meeting be televised. It is attendance at meetings that is encouraged for everyone who's interested in subject matter. So, that's, that's a choice they can make, but I don't think they should be criticized because they choose to be close to the environs where their records are and their, their offices in order to efficiently handle matters that come up at their meeting.
And nobody's criticizing them. The point is, that last meeting you had this question with a rate utility payer, if it was a televised meeting, Mr. Hanley's doing a wonderful job of putting them on to YouTube right now, under the Wallingford page, all the meetings. The counselors who felt, some of the counselors who felt they were in the dark, not understanding fully what was going on, would have been able to previously to the meeting, click on YouTube, go to that meeting, and watch that particular part of the meeting, and at least understood what happened in their offices or here. And that would have made it more enlightening for the counselors, so they could have made a better informed decision, because they're under the time clock here, they have to do something within the timeframe. It would just make things more transparent and more beneficial to the council and to the public.
I would advise anyone who's interested in rate matters, you better plan to spend significant time going to a meeting, having a chance to actually question people, and reviewing the complexity involved with rates. They are not simple, they're extremely complex. Being a watcher is not going to get you to an understanding of what is involved in ratemaking. So if there's that level of interest in it, anyone can attend a meeting, and that's what should occur.
Understand, but it would have been, all nine counselors could have watched it, and all nine counselors might not have been able to go on a Tuesday night and so forth, but that's besides the point. And the third point is then, the, hopefully that the council, or the, what is it, the commission, charter revision commission will, you know, we've only had, as they said that night, there were two people that made that decision. Hopefully that the charter revision commission, I think they've already voted it down once, but hopefully the council will allow the public, public comment again, and bring that forward, and maybe the commission will have a change of mind and allow that to be voted, meaning expanding the commission to at least five members. So you have a bigger quorum and more, more debate and a question. You have nine counselors here, you have a budget down there of what, ninety, eighty to a hundred million dollars a year? It's something that the council or the charter revision commission should look at.
I would just remind everyone, the electric, water, and sewer have had three commissioners since we adopted a charter in 1961. I believe they're extremely well-run, we do not have issues surrounding the running of those, those departments. The services are well-regarded, I think they've guided the town very appropriately over decades. It is not numbers of people that make a difference, it's the quality of people, whether it is one, two, three, four, five, it's quality of people.
And I agree, and the more people that you have that are quality, that are sitting on the board there, you have a more vibrant and active discussion on issues, and just because you've done something in the past doesn't mean it carries forward forever. Things are much more complex now in the marketplace than they were fifty, forty, and even thirty years ago. Thank you.
And I trust you've brought this up to the charter revision commission, which is where it's properly discussed right now.
We did, but.
Okay.
You guys can make a second public hearing on this.
Heard you.
And if you do, then we can discuss it again.
Mr. Kennedy.
Don Kennedy, Bull Avenue. Last Thursday I was walking along Valley Street, and I found this flag in the gutter. This is one of the many flags that the town flies on the utility poles. As you can see, it is very well-weathered. It is torn, it's got holes in it. The stake that's holding it is all crooked and weathered also. Protocol says when a flag, when a flag reaches the state, it's supposed to be replaced. If you drive up and down Quinnipiac or any of the, or Ward, not Ward, parts of Ward, Quinnipiac Valley, you will see that there's a lot of these flags that are currently flying. In fact, the one at North Cherry and Quinnipiac is cut in two, with the striped part flying or wrapped around the actual light pole. I think that the town has the responsibility, since these flags are being flown on town property, the town has the responsibility to take them down when they are weathered, when they are torn, and replace them, or not put them up at all. But they shouldn't leave them up there that way. It is really disgraceful. And I, you know, I brought this one as an example, I picked it out of the gutter, I wrapped it up, I took it home, and this is just typical of the type of flag down there. I noticed the flags right across from Town Hall here are in pretty good shape, but the ones down the bottom of Quinnipiac are not. So I would recommend that, you know, the town does something about this.
How long ago did you pick up that flag?
Last Thursday, Thursday morning.
I'm sorry, you did say that. Okay.
Okay, thank you. Maybe you can give it to the Boy Scouts for a proper disposal.
You can take care of it. Mr. Kennedy, can you pick up the flag and ask us to put it on the floor? Leave it on the desk with the clerk, thanks. Gentlemen in the blue shirt. Name and address for the record, please.
Michael Slecher. I live at 22 Pomeroy, and actually that's why I'm here. I wrote a letter to the mayor and to the council members regarding a tree in the front of my property. It's on the town property. I think all the details are in the letter itself to both the mayor and the council members. Just to reiterate a few of the points, this is a large tree, it's my, front of my house is probably about eighteen feet from the front of the tree, and eleven feet from the sidewalk. We're talking about a tree that during the microburst a year ago did a lot of damage, not only to my property, but to the town property. It's protruding, it's also lifting up the sidewalk, it's destroying the curb, it's also destroying the driveway on the town side of the property. I tried sealing it last year in the driveway, but now it's protruding even further up. This did result, I bought the house about a year, year and a half ago, this did result in someone falling, I believe it was 2014, I included the police report in my letter, and I believe that person also settled with the town for, I don't know how much, but undisclosed amount of money. I see this as going to cause further problems, not only is it a danger, and I should say it's also growing into the sewer, the sewer line. The person who owned the house before me had to periodically have a snake to cut the roots. And if you go from what is the outlet, according to one contractor twenty-two feet places where it's going into the sewer line around where the sidewalk is, so on the town property or the property of the town, it would seem to me, I could go on, there's a number of things here, but I think it's all in the letter, I'm sure you guys received that letter. It seems to me to be probably the best thing to remove this tree, because it's going to become a problem later on, and it's going to cost a lot more money than simply removing the tree. It, and something I didn't mention too, the roots are now growing to what is the foundation of my house. My, the sewer line is working, as long as you periodically are sending a snake in there, which I did recently, but I could see this later becoming a much bigger problem. I'm going to leave it at that, but I assume, I didn't receive a response from the town, but I was told Counselor Zandry and another council member did come and look at the tree so they can maybe tell you what they saw.
Thank you. I'm sure the mayor will make sure that Public Works is duly notified.
I, I don't believe I've seen the letter, I can check on it. What was your name again?
Slecher with an S, S.L.E.T.C.H.E.R. I also included photographs too within.
What address?
22 Pomeroy Avenue.
22 Pomeroy. Did they check on whether it's on town property or private?
It's definitely on town property, and I've also dealt with Mr. McCully, I sent letters to everyone, I CC'd them.
And what did he say?
Mr., well, I addressed that in the second letter. The first letter I didn't get much of a response, and the second letter I say he didn't address the issues. I probably would say read the letter, because I can only summarize, and I don't want to get into too much detail. There's a number of issues, I'd say there's, the main things is public safety, and then there's damage to private, but also town property.
Great.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public?
Willie Fritz, 30th Lane, McLean and Clinton. I know there's an item on the agenda going forward. Some towns, public comment is the only time you have to speak on agenda items. I don't know if you have public comment during the agenda items.
We do.
Thank you.
My name's Rick Bergeron, 7 Ortens Drive, Wallingford. I was here a number of months ago, probably back around April or so, discussing things with the issues we have with our new home we bought ten years ago, and then I, I've had a disc problem with my back years ago, and I periodically get a sciatic nerve issue, and I was out of, really hurting for a few months, so I haven't been around avoiding, not avoiding you guys, but just I want to continue with the discussion, because it's, it's just really pathetic what we got for a house, and the town inspectors, what they did, didn't do with their inspection process. I'm just really appalled at what we were delivered for a home. And just to refresh you a little bit, I may not have explained this when I first was here the preliminary time, I was ill, quite ill, in 2005, I almost blew an artery to one of my kidneys, was on all kinds of medication for a year, got out of the hospital in '05, we said let's not screw our life anymore, let's get a dream home. We thought we stumbled, we thought we stumbled onto a dream home at this development up on, on Ortens Drive, it was called Verna at Woodcrest Knoll.
I'm going to interrupt you. I do recall your being here, I think we all do.
Right.
And I think that if you are alleging a claim against the town, we really can't talk about it, and you should make your claim.
Well, part of my issue that I want to discuss tonight is the, is the inspectors, what they, what they don't do, and in fact, the gentleman who did the final inspection, who issued the certificate of occupancy was Al Kishcom. He's, what is he, like, probably he's ninety-seven years old now, he's still working for the town? I mean, what, what value does he have for inspections?
Mr. Chairman, I do not think we should be discussing ages or capabilities of town employees.
I would throw out what I said then about the ages, but he's put the, he'd signed this to CO on it, on the house ten years ago, and I don't think anybody was ever in there, because the things wrong with the house is atrocious. Like I mentioned last time, we paid twenty thousand dollars for a bonus room, it's not there. It was never installed.
I really, I really think what you're talking about amounts to legal claims against the town. It's not something that we would discuss in a council meeting, I don't think it's appropriate. I would encourage you to contact the legal.
So you don't, you don't want to discuss the non-functionality of the, of the inspectors? Because I talked to another builder who's close by, he's not from Wallingford, but he's done developments in town, he said the inspectors are never there, they're never checking anything.
The council is not in a position to discuss personnel issues either. I mean, that, that, what, is what it seems to me that you're bringing up.
You don't want to hear anything, but we're still paying full taxes, ten thousand dollars a year on the house.
If you have claims against the town, I would encourage you to talk to the law department.
I spoke with them once already, and then that was, was worthless, and even a while back when I bumped into Mayor Dickinson at Neal's Donuts one morning, he told me about this risk insurance that the town has. They've gotten a risk insurance. I've got the letter from the risk management office right here saying they have nothing for the inspectors.
I, I'm, I'm not so sure that, I don't have the letter in front of me, but.
It's right here if you want to see it.
We know the town has insurance, I'm not, I'm not so sure.
On the inspectors? Let me read that to you.
Mr. Chairman, if, if there's a cause of action against the town, which would be required if there is to be a payment for malfeasance.
What was that?
On the part of town employees, you would have to bring that lawsuit. We are not going to make a determination here as to whether there is legitimacy or not regarding a claim. You would have to make a claim against the town, which is done by serving the town clerk. We have liability insurance, we have professional liability insurance, but you would have to make a claim against the town.
Well, you don't have risk insurance, why, why would you have liability if you don't have risk insurance?
Well, the, the liability covers risks.
Oh, it does? Was this Kurt Traber, risk manager? Tell me that you don't, so you tell me liability does cover risk then?
Well, I, you know, I, liability is your exposure to risks that can bring a cause of action that could cause you damage, so, you know, we're talking about two sides of the same issue.
Mm-hmm.
So I, I'm not sure I understand your question.
Well, my main question was, you know, hoping that somehow, some way, somebody would talk to these town inspectors and make sure that they get a little more, little more aggressive with their inspections, a little more up to date, check the homes when they're being built, not just sign off on them, and I don't think anybody, anybody ever walked through the house. So many things wrong with it that they should have seen.
You're saying this happened ten years ago. Certainly when we receive complaints on an ongoing issue, we do inquire, we do investigate. Something that occurred ten years ago, in fact, you brought a lawsuit.
We did bring a lawsuit, and that, that's.
And the lawsuit.
Was not.
Was, came to a conclusion. The town was not a party to that lawsuit. At this point, I believe the statute of limitations probably is a bar to you bringing a lawsuit against the town, but you should speak to an attorney and find out what rights you have against the town. But you have pursued rights. you have against the town. But you have pursued rights, and you did apparently have a judgment of some kind. To be discussing this now is really way beyond appropriate time period.
Well, the judgment was two years ago, and it was... We had some... My wife had some illnesses, and it's... A lot of it's tied into this shenanigans we went through with the builder.
Well, I'm sorry to hear that, but that doesn't change...
They really should get their act together. They've got no...
But there's no exemption from the statute of limitations for those reasons. So, that's the way the law is, and...
Well, we'll see what the state can do with that $20,000 bonus room that's not there.
Okay. We are out of time for a public comment. Thank you. Moving on to item six. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. I move that we rename Yalesville School the Mary G. Fritz Elementary School.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on the council? Councillor Laffin, yes, you do have correspondence.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have correspondence that was sent to the council that was asked to be read. "To the Wallingford Town Council, Mary Fritz was a fine legislator, and it would be fitting to honor her memory in some way. Do not change the name of Yalesville School. To do it, find another way. To change the name of Yalesville School would reduce the uniqueness of the village of Yalesville. We have already lost our Yalesville fire station. We almost lost the Yalesville post office a few years ago, and there are repeated suggestions to close the Yalesville branch of the library. I knew Mary Fritz for a long time. Our children went to Yalesville School. I knew her well enough to venture that she would say, 'You want to honor me? Go ahead, but just don't change the name of our Yalesville School. To do it, find another way.' Sincerely, Eugene Gazda, Hillcock Drive.'" And the second letter, "As much as I feel Mary Fritz was a wonderful legislator and represented all people excellent for many years, I am opposed to renaming Yalesville School in honor of her. Mary Fritz was a representative and always listened to me and answered my questions and concerns. She does deserve recognition, but maybe a library or gym inside the building would be a better choice with a plaque naming it after her. Being a resident of Wallingford for over forty years, the village of Yalesville should remain a quiet little community. The school name left intact. I will not be there for the meeting and would like the council to read this into the record of the meeting. Raymond Rice, Sr., Pearson Drive."
Thank you. Councillor Fishbein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, the examples that were given in the correspondence, you know, the post office was closed. They didn't change the name of the post office. Certainly, Yalesville as a village was not named after the school. The school was named after the village. Changing the name of the school doesn't change the name of the village, nor do I foresee the character of Yalesville as the quaint portion of Wallingford changing just because this body decides to, rightfully so, honor Mary Fritz for her many years of accomplishment and dedication to our citizens and education. So, at this point, I know of no reason why we shouldn't do this, and I think that... I think it's a really good idea, and I think we should do this. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Councillor Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't agree with the letters, and I'm not going to address the letters, but I'm going to say this to the Fritz family whom I know are here, more directly to you, Willie, than anybody else. How great is it going to be to drive down Route 68, Church Street, Yalesville, and see the name Mary, is it G.? Fritz on that school? I mean, that is just incredible. It's a legacy that will far exceed our lifetime, and in my opinion, it's so well-deserved. She was a tremendous lady and friends to many who are here this evening to support you and your family. I think we also want to recognize the Board of Education. They let us know that they're not even going to take this up at the board meeting because they're all in favor of it. They had a lot of business. We're all going to go down there on Monday night to discuss it and lend our support to renaming Yalesville School to Mary G. Fritz Elementary School. It wasn't necessary. It was unanimous on behalf of the Board of Education, and they didn't see a need to put it on the agenda. So, to you, Billy, and your family, I know how much you miss your wife and your mom and your grandma, but this will be a legacy that will far surpass our lifetime. So, I'm hoping that our council approves this unanimously as well, and that next year, we're all gathered on the grounds of what is now Yalesville Elementary School to tear from the wall the covering that will say, "Mary G. Fritz Elementary School." Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Before we continue discussion, we did get a letter from the chairman of the Board of Education, who said they were supportive of this change. Their conditions were that we wait until the end of the current school year and that we not require the Board of Ed to fund the sign out of their budget. So, they did, in fact, express support for this. Carrying on with the council comment, Councillor Shortell.
Well, very briefly, because Councillor Sullivan was very eloquent, so it's hard to follow Councillor Sullivan. I respectfully disagree with the letters that were written, and I believe as the only Yalesville resident up here of the nine of us, I can speak. I've lived here, lived in Yalesville my whole life. My mom lived in Yalesville her whole life. My grandparents lived on Fritz Place in Yalesville, so it'll be an honor to have Yalesville School named for Mary Fritz. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Letourneau.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I do disagree with the letters that were sent to us. I believe that the... It's not a detriment to Yalesville by any means. It's a great addition to Yalesville. Mary was a unique person, and I'm sure everybody in the audience and everybody here tonight can tell a Mary story that knew her. I know I can. And what was unique with Mary that I found, being a Republican and her being a Democrat, the very first year I was elected, nine years ago, she called me after the election after I was sworn in, and she said, "John, it's Mary Fritz." She said, "If there's anything I could ever do for you, please give me a call." And we talked for about a half hour. And every election cycle after that, Mary called me every time I was sworn in, and it was always the same thing. "John, if there's anything I can do for you, you know, you can call me." And there were times I did call her. But, you know, thinking tonight, renaming the Yalesville School, all of us know Mary Fritz. Every one of us knows the name Mary Fritz. And her being so important to Wallingford, for the things that she has done for Wallingford, for the things she has brought to Yalesville, what she has done for education, it's going to be more important into the future. Fifty years from now, who's Mary Fritz? And those teachers at Yalesville School will be able to explain to their children, to their students, who Mary Fritz was, and the difference that she made to our town. So, it's not... I don't look at it for the now. I look at it for the future. And hopefully, it'll stay that way into a hundred years. And some student raises their hand, "Who was Mary Fritz?" Just as they're doing at Dag Hammersholz. How many students went to that school and raised their hand and said, "Who was Dag Hammersholz?" And boy, you can bet that was a whole class discussion on who he was. And I want to see that discussion happen a hundred years from now. Who's Mary Fritz? So, she won't be forgotten. That's a legacy that you leave behind. You won't be forgotten. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Councillor Testa.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That was very well spoken. Councillor Letourneau, you pretty much relayed a lot of what was on my mind. In other words, I'm not going to talk about my own personal experience with Mary, her family, her husband, my wood shop teacher. I could talk forever about my personal experiences, but that's not what this is about. And I take... And I take the naming of public facilities very seriously because you can get carried away. And you get carried away, and I wouldn't want to see us going off on a rampage, just renaming everything. Every time we think somebody, you know, we liked somebody, we thought they were wonderful. And in this case, that's not like that. This is somebody who truly warrants this type of honor for the reasons you brought up, Mr. Letourneau. It was a combination of things. When I think of honoring somebody by naming a facility, a public space for them, there needs to be a heavy degree of relevance. We named this chambers after Mr. Parisi, and that made a little sense. Mary both seemed to represent, and I don't mean politically, Yalesville in so many ways for so many years. And she also was such a strong supporter of education that this makes perfect sense for me. And I'm so comfortable and so pleased and honored to be able to be a part of naming the Yalesville School for her. And that's why I'm in favor of this. And I love the idea of knowing that students for years down the road will not only be able to discuss who she was because of what she did for education, but for what she did for women, families. She was a trailblazer in so many ways. So, her example will be able to be discussed, not only her name. So, I'm going to be honored to vote in favor of this motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Before I go to the public, I am going to talk a little bit about my personal experience. Since I've been chairman of the town council, Mary was certain to reach out and let me know what was going on at the legislature that she thought was relevant to business in town. She would periodically mail things to my home, and she would periodically email me to keep me abreast of developments at the legislature that were impacting municipal government. And she was also, at times when I did email her with concerns, she was very responsive. And some legislators choose to respond through staff, and I'm pretty certain the significant majority of the responses I got from Mary were from her own direction or her own hand. So, I, too, can attest to experiencing her zeal for what was important for Wallingford. If there's no further comment from the council, then we'll go to the public. Councillor Fishbein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The sign issue, I guess I have to bring it up. Do we know how much... It seems that the Board of Education doesn't want to fund the sign based upon their correspondence.
In my opinion, it's, for lack of a better term, it's somewhat academic. We fund... The council, the town, is going to fund the Board of Education's budget for the following school year. We can certainly address this when we do the budget in May. And I think it sounds to me like the council is going to vote in favor of this, so... And my conversations with the mayor is that he is not at all unsupportive, so that we will see that this gets into the budget come this spring. Mayor?
I think we can find out what the cost is, and then, you know, we may appropriate it beforehand, and we'll provide the money from the general government side, one way or the other. But you just need to know a dollar figure.
I just wanted to get this all done, so, you know, if a transfer from contingency or, you know, it was anticipated that this body tonight perhaps sets aside some money, you know, I didn't know. I just, I don't want any roadblocks. I just want this done, and that seems to be an unsettled portion of this. But I believe...
I don't think it's unsettled. I think what we need to know is what the dollar figure is, so we can find that out. And I can be in touch with the superintendent's office if they can develop the cost. If they're not able to, then we'll look for other ways to develop it. But I'm sure that's not a problem. It's, once we have that figure, then it will be appropriation of funds for it.
Okay. With those representations, I'm certainly comfortable. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. With that, any comments from the public? Just remind us who you are for the record and pull the mic closer to you.
Betty Torrey, 14 Brownstone Road, Yalesville. I admired Mary. She was my friend, but she was a legislator who cared for everyone. I lost a friend, and the 90th district lost a friend. And having school named for her is what she deserves to be honored with. And I thank you for all your kind words for her. This is May McDonald. This is Mary's granddaughter. Let's lower it for you, sweetheart.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Mr. Fritz.
I don't have many comments. I want to thank the council and the Board of Education. And it was true what John said, many of you said. It was always Mary personally that would call. It wasn't her secretary, other than me sometimes, but she did a lot for the town. She did a lot for Yalesville, and she's gotten cooperation from everyone up here on the town council. In fact, when I heard Mr. Shortell talk, her father and Mary were best of friends, and your mother and Mary were good friends, too. And it's nice to see a Yalesville person on the council. But at one time, Vinnie used to live on our side of town, but I want to thank all of you. And I talked to the mayor about it, and I know that he was supportive, too, but it's hard to talk about her without turning up with thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Fritz.
Once again, Willie Fritz, 30, Sunny McLean. I really want to thank the council for their support. Unfortunately, the Board of Ed's not here for me to personally thank as the oldest sibling of the six that somehow these two guys raised, and we've all been pretty successful. Unfortunately, I went into politics, but that's a different story. It's wonderful to know that our mother's name is going to be recognized for generations to come. John, thank you for your comments. That was very appropriate. We dedicated a school in Clinton two weeks ago to Charles Morgan, who donated the money and built the Morgan School in 1890, and they are still talking about him, asking about what he did. He was a shipping magnet back in the 1800s, and they still ask about what he did and why the school's named after him. So, to know that our mother is going to be recognized in that way for generations to come is fantastic. Thank you, Mayor, for your support. This is fantastic for our family, and Mom lives on. Craig, good luck. I hope you win.
Thank you, sir.
Any other comments from the public? There being none, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Certainly. Fishbein?
Yes.
Laffin?
Yes.
Letourneau?
With pleasure, yes.
Marone?
Yes.
Shortell?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Zandry?
Absolutely, yes.
Chairman Savoni?
Yes.
And the motion passes. And the motion passes.
Mayor, do we have anything for item seven?
Want to vote on whether I bring something up or not? No, there's nothing.
That being the case, a motion to adjourn is in order.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, I declare the meeting adjourned.